We're gonna call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Yes, I go to roll call. Sorry. Mayor Skook?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Definitely here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Present.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you, Diane. Next item is a presentation. Citizens Academy graduation. Ryan, you are up.
Mayor Council, it's a good thing I brought my fan club with me, otherwise there wouldn't be anybody in the audience tonight. So, thanks for coming. You are all familiar with the Citizens Academy that we have going on. We are going on our 11th year now. There are 26 graduates in the current class. That brings us to a total of 629 residents that have taken this class over the years. Many of them are serving on boards and commissions and some on the town council as well. We already have 31 people on a wait list for the fall, so the next class is almost full already. Some of those will drop off, but we'll still advertise and try and get a few more in there. So with that, we'd like to invite you, Dan, to congratulate our latest class, class number 24. We'll call them up in alphabetical order.
You baked cookies for this event, didn't you, Ryan?
He said 26.
I slaved away in the kitchen all day again.
Go ahead.
So, just cookies though, no dinner tonight.
It's Larry.
Okay.
This is class 24.
Alrighty.
But 11 years.
What, 11 years?
11 years, class 24.
I'd say 12 now.
Is it 12 years? 12 years? Okay.
Would you both?
Year 12.
See the crap I get?
Alright, I know a few of these folks are out of town. Is this on? Can you hear me? Yes? Alright, first up, Barb and Rick Baskin.
24.
Not here.
Class.
Barb and Rick. Maria and Stephen Broderick. Right there. You can clap for each other.
Now walk the gauntlet.
Thank you.
Lois Case, I don't see Lois here.
Congratulations, Lois.
David Crowder?
Congratulations.
Tina Elliott? There she is. Go ahead and clap.
Nicely done.
Thank you so much.
Tom, I'm gonna say your last name right.
Congratulations.
Fatu Gates?
Thanks.
Oh, luckily he's not here.
Congratulations.
Terrence Feeney, senior. Right there.
What's going on up there? Just doing their presentation. So, they can see people.
Shirley Ann Guston.
Do I repeat it?
Congratulations, Shirley.
He's glad we did it.
Larry and Penelope Johnston.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Ivan Legler.
Ivan Legler. Oh, wait, he didn't graduate. He only comes half the time, so he didn't meet our attention requirements.
You're saying he failed.
He failed. Katie and Mike Canon.
Oh.
Jennifer and Sean Marks? No. Dave and Linda McKee? Oh, three strikes, I'm out. Mary Peterson? There she is.
Congratulations.
Cynthia and Dave Sheed?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for doing that.
Kendall Schumacher, I know Kendall's here.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Kendall's running for office, so she may join us on the DS at some point, maybe. David and Elaine Smith?
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Mark Spencer?
Congratulations.
I don't think Debbie's here. Debbie Steinman?
Very nice meeting you.
Oh, there, sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm so glad you did.
Yes, welcome everybody.
Ryan, first one. No, Ryan, says there's cookies, get them before they get cold. He's got them all lined up on a table there.
Before we do that, does anybody wanna make any comments? Before we adjourn for the last time?
20 minutes each.
Yeah?
You gotta say it at the microphone.
You have to come up to the microphone.
About 20 minutes.
You can be the class spokesman, right here.
Name, Ryan?
I would just like to thank you for the support of all of you to give us the opportunity to do what we did. I know there's a lot of work and a lot of time, but it was not for naught. We learned a lot and there's a lot of enthusiasm for the community, so thank you very much.
Well, let's go and do it. Cookies are getting cold.
Be here or be square.
So I think I want to get one of these shirts. So, like, I personally...
And our funds.
Ryan, you are up.
I'm back. We are. Don't leave. We are pleased to be at this point where we are here to recommend an award for a street project, the Long Look Sidewalk Project. We received CDBG grant funds for this in the amount of approximately $200,000. We were notified probably July, August of last year, so we've been through the process of going through a final design and bidding that out. And this passed Monday, or we could go Monday, I should say. Maybe it was this past Monday. We could go Monday. The days all kinda melt together, don't they? Recently, we opened bids for this project. And we're starting to see prices increase a little bit with the economy. We only got four bids for this project. In the past, we've gotten seven, eight bids, but we were fortunate to get four bids for this project. The low bidder is Earth Resources Corporation in the amount of $413,431. You can see the presentation, I took those photos about six months ago on a cloudy day. This project will connect the sidewalk from the viewpoint intersection at Long Look to the recent improvements at Glasswrit Hill. So when we're done, we'll have a continuous sidewalk along that stretch of road. This is a heavily trafficked road. There's lots of high school, middle school students that are walking along this road. I see them every morning as they come into work. So we think this is a very worthwhile project. That's a copy of the street sign that if you approve this contract, it will be going up soon. And Public Works will be going door to door delivering this flyer, letting the residents know of the construction. So as I mentioned, about half of the funding is coming from Community Development Block grants, the other half is coming from Highway User Revenue Funds that we have budgeted for. This is a project that will carry over into the next fiscal year, so we have some funds budgeted this year and some next year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Laura?
I don't really have a question, but I wanna make a comment particularly for our guests and for our listening audits at home. What a lot of people don't realize is we don't have just a high school there. We have a middle school and we have a Head Start program there. And several of those Head Start children live nearby and they walk. And let me tell you, this is one of the better things we've done, and I'm just excited that we're gonna get to complete it. And another gentleman at Citizens Academy last night asked about our bid process. I'm looking at everybody who placed a bid. We had a winner with every single one.
Yes, they're all...
I always feel good when I see that.
Any other questions? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, remind me, if the CDBG, those are competitive, are they?
Correct. This was a competitive grant that we were awarded last year.
Okay, good.
It's a statewide program for non-entitlement entities.
Yes, and you know, and I'm really proud of our town because we've been pretty successful, if I remember correctly. Yes, we have. Thank you, sir.
Larry, comment?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, one thing that has gone unsaid is that, you know, every three years or four years, we get an automatic allocation of CDBG money in the order of magnitude of $600,000 or $700,000. And what you have elected to do over the years is sink that into hard infrastructure. And the most recent award in that amount is going to the Boys and Girls Club expansion and putting up that gymnasium. But all of these other smaller $200,000, $300,000 CDBG projects, they keep awarding to the town of Prescott Valley because Ryan does such a great job of keeping them happy. And it's not an easy thing to spend federal dollars, as you are probably well aware. And you have to dot every I, cross every T, and you've gotta put up with a great deal of regulatory process. Believe it or not, Ryan does that, and he does it well. So hats off to Ryan.
Good job, Ryan. Any other comments, anyone?
Let's do it.
Do it. I think we're ready to do it, Ryan.
Alright, we'll bring that back for you next week for official consideration. Pending that, the plan is to do the construction over the summer before school starts again, at least get most of it done to get out of the way of the kids, so...
Good job. Okay, the next one we have is discussion, arts and culture review. Ivan?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we, as I understand it, have had some difficulty having a quorum in one of our committees. And we set all of that up by town code provision. And you, as a council, have a great deal of flexibility as how you set those up, because obviously each one of the committees and commissions is designed to help the town council move ahead with its job of taking actions. And you look to those committees and commissions to give you recommendations. And so the proposal from the subcommittee was that perhaps we look at reducing the number of voting members for this particular commission so that there might be a smaller quorum, and therefore we could more easily have meetings on a monthly basis because of the historical difficulty of having folks have the time to be in those meetings. However, you would keep the number of participants as high as it currently is by giving yourself the option of having two non-voting members who would then participate in this committee and bring their ideas and their experience and background. And so that's what is being proposed in this fairly straightforward amendment to Article 18 of the town code.
Council, got any comment? Laura, any comment?
I think it would be important for anyone listening and for the rest of the council to understand that we have two other boards that also have the same number of five. So we aren't creating precedent here, and I know people get concerned about that. What we're trying to do, and I'm sure Councilman Rooney knows, having served on there, this has been a longstanding issue, and we needed to solve it. And here's a simple solution. And I like simple solutions.
Rick, any comment?
Yeah, this is something we've struggled with for the last three years, actually, trying to get enough people that would attend any one given meeting that they could vote on anything. Getting a quorum was, has been, nearly impossible. When it came time to do the work that was necessary, there were people that were willing to do the work. The problem is, they couldn't vote on anything to set anything up because they couldn't get a quorum. And we were looking for solutions during our last interview session, actually. And we just came up with the idea that why not have alternate members who were non-voting members and thereby reducing the number of actual members, voting members? And that would in fact reduce the number needed for a quorum, because that number could have been reached in virtually every meeting that we've had of that committee. And we'd have been able to do business a lot better than we have. So I guess what we're asking the whole council to do tonight is to consider this change that we're presenting to you. And if any of you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Good questions, anyone? Jody?
I wanna touch base here, and Ivan may be able to help, but I do agree, it's important to be able to conduct business and you have to have a quorum to do that. So Ivan, in regards to terms in office, and I'm sure we probably have this put in place for some of our other boards and commissions, say if a service member gets called up to duty. I know we've got, you know, here, what, three meetings within 12 months, that member shall be deemed to have vacated. Do we have something in place to cover an allowance of that nature?
Basically, in that circumstance, we've just not gone forward with the possibility. That isn't a requirement, that's an option.
Thank you.
Heidi?
Well, as the new kid on the committee that does the, that basically suggested this, I was fortunate enough to have a lot of experience to refer to. But when I heard that they haven't been able to have a voting quorum for over a year...
Consistently.
Yeah, well, consistently. You know, you take a look at what they're responsible for and what they're supposed to do, and we have projects around the town that need to be taken care of, and if they can't be acted on because they don't have a quorum, that creates a serious issue. And I think we spent a considerable amount of time on it, and the appropriate amount of time on it, and we came up with a simple solution, as Laura Lee said, and it works, and I think it's a good way to go. And we're gonna start seeing some progress from that, from arts and culture. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mary?
Well, you know, I did serve on these interviews for a few years, and I can absolutely testify that it was an ongoing issue. And we do have business to conduct, and this would make things so much simpler for everybody and in the community itself as we move forward with different events that we do. So I'm absolutely in favor of this.
Good. Mike?
Yeah, I support this. I think it's a good solution, and I've had a lot of background in nonprofits, and I've even seen from the civic organization where they actually would go to those in attendance, a quorum of those in attendance when there was voting, you could go ahead and do that as well. So I think this is a good option, and I think it'll work fine.
Any other comments? Jody?
Mayor, I just want to be clear that I am grateful for our commissioners on arts and culture. You know, for various reasons, someone may not have been able to attend a meeting, and certainly this will help with that so we can conduct business. But by golly, you know, it's wonderful that we have that here in our town.
Good comment. Any other comments? Ivan? Send her back next week, okay? Okay, if there's no other discussion, we move on to number six. Stone Ridge Waterline Installation Project. Neil, you are up, front and center.
I wanted to bring this before you this evening, just to talk about it. I have talked about it in the past, so I think you're well aware that this project was coming forward, but I wanted to talk about it a little bit tonight, just to make you aware of the financing side of things. But I do have a little bit of a slideshow, it's like four slides, just so you and everybody else in the audience will know what we're doing here. And so, we're gonna be constructing a 16-inch waterline from the end of Destiny Drive in Stone Ridge up to the future water tank site, which has already been excavated and was the road and the tank site were excavated about 10 years ago, and you can see them on this aerial map. And so we're gonna put the waterline in first, and then this next fiscal year, we're gonna be putting the tank in. And so, we had the waterline designed, we went out for bids, and we received seven bids. So I don't know what's wrong with Ryan's project, but I don't have any problem getting seven bidders. In fact, I have another project I got seven bidders on, so...
You'll pay for that.
No, mine are more fun, that's what it is. So we got seven bidders, and you can see there was a range of bids. The low bid came in at $514,000 and change. There was a math error in that bid though, so it's actually about $529,000, but there's still the low bidder by about $150,000. And so, we will be bringing this back to you next week to award the contract. And mainly what I wanted to talk about was related to the budget. We don't actually have a budget for this project in this fiscal year, but we're going to award it in this fiscal year and get it underway, and we are gonna spend money on it. But the money's gonna come from the project that we have designated as the Summit 2 Water Tank. So we've got $2.5 million in that fund that we're not spending. We are going to be starting on the Summit Water Tank here at the end of June. I'm gonna be coming before you with a contract for a consulting firm to do the design work for that tank as well as for the Stone Ridge Water Tank. And so we may spend a little bit of money of the 2.5, but nowhere near the whole thing. So what we wanted to do was actually move the waterline, this waterline project forward this year so that as we go into the design of the two tanks, we could then award that project and move forward. It wouldn't have made any sense to build the Stone Ridge Water Tank not having the waterline in place because we wouldn't be able to fill it with water. We wouldn't be able to do anything else. And so, we thought, well, let's move this part of it forward, get this out of the way so that, you know, next summer or even, or next spring, depending on when this goes out, the contractor can just get up there, build the Stone Ridge Tank, and we can connect it up and be done. And so, as you can see from this slide, we do have next year budgeted $3 million for the Stone Ridge Water Tank, which was to include the waterline, and $2.5 million for the Summit Tank as well. So we do have plenty of budgetary authority next year to do both projects, and I just wanted to explain why we were doing it the way we were doing it. And I think with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Laura?
As indicated, this is primarily for Stone Ridge. Will this take care of the future development and until it's all completed, or we will have to add another water tank down the line?
For Stone Ridge?
Yes.
This will be it. And in fact, not only will it be for Stone Ridge, but it also does serve other parts of town, and it acts as, it will act as a backup supply, a redundant supply, and it will work in concert with the, what we call the Granite View Tank, which is the one behind Home Depot. Both of those tanks sit at the same elevation, and that'll give us 4 million gallons of storage. And that tank actually serves not only the area along Highway 69, but it also serves the downtown area, so the hospital and places like that. So now we'll have a redundant storage supply in addition to more storage for Stone Ridge and growth.
Any other questions or comments? I think Ryan wants to talk to you, Neil.
I don't think...
Mike?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if the Stone Ridge community, will they be given a notice that this activity is gonna be occurring in terms of construction?
That's what we're doing tonight.
Yeah. Because they are, you know, they get very interested in what's going on, and I'm sure they'll have an interest in dust control and everything else.
Right. I mean, we don't, we don't always do that type of thing. We could put a sign up there saying what we're doing if that's what you'd like. I think a lot of the residents actually know that this is coming, but yeah, they may not.
Mayor?
Yeah, Laura?
We can put, we can put an article in our town newsletter in the water bill. That's probably what the intention is to do, is that logical?
We can do that, we can put it on our website, or we can do it through the Facebook connection or whatever as well, yeah.
We don't have that many people clinging to our television show.
I'm sorry.
Good. Any other? Larry?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, just for the record, there's a very likely chance that there is a soil...
so, we had the waterline designed, we went out for bids, and we received seven bids. So I don't know what's wrong with Ryan's projects, but I don't have any problem getting seven bidders. In fact, I have another project I got seven bidders on, so.
You'll pay for that.
No, mine are more fun, that's what it is. So we got seven bidders, and you can see there was a range of bids. The low bid came in at $514,000 and change. There was a math error in that bid, though, so it's actually about $529,000, but they're still the low bidder, by about $150,000. And so, we will be bringing this back to you next week to award the contract. And mainly what I wanted to talk about was related to the budget. We don't actually have a budget for this project in this fiscal year, but we're going to award it in this fiscal year and get it underway. And we are going to spend money on it. But the money's going to come from the project that we have designated as the Summit Two Water Tank. So we've got $2.5 million in that fund that we're not spending. We are going to be starting on the Summit Water Tank here, at the end of June. I'm going to be coming before you with a contract for a consulting firm to do the design work for that tank, as well as for the Stone Ridge Water Tank. And so, we may spend a little bit of money of the 2.5, but nowhere near the whole thing. So, what we wanted to do was actually move the waterline, this waterline project, forward this year, so that as we go into the design of the two tanks, we could then award that project and move forward. It wouldn't have made any sense to build the Stone Ridge Water Tank not having the waterline in place, because we wouldn't be able to fill it with water, we wouldn't be able to do anything else. And so, we thought, well, let's move this part of it forward, get this out of the way, so that, you know, next summer, or even, or next spring, depending on when this goes out, the contractor can just get up there, build the Stone Ridge tank, and we can connect it up and be done. And so, as you can see from this slide, we do have next year budgeted $3 million for the Stone Ridge Water Tank, which was to include the waterline, and $2.5 million for the Summit Tank as well. So, we do have plenty of budgetary authority next year to do both projects, and I just wanted to explain why we were doing it the way we were doing it. And I think with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Laura?
As indicated, this is primarily for Stone Ridge. Will this take care of the future development, and until it's all completed, or we will have to add another water tank down the line?
For Stone Ridge?
Yes.
This will be it. And in fact, not only will it be for Stone Ridge, but it also does serve other parts of town, and it acts, it will act as a backup supply, a redundant supply, and it will work in concert with the, what we call the Granite View Tank, which is the one behind Home Depot. Both of those tanks sit at the same elevation, and that'll give us 4 million gallons of storage. And that tank actually serves not only the area along Highway 69, but it also serves the downtown area, so the hospital, and places like that. So now we'll have a redundant storage supply, in addition to more storage for Stone Ridge and growth.
Any other questions or comments? I think Ryan wants to talk to you, Neil.
I don't think.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if the Stone Ridge community, will they be given a notice that this activity is going to be occurring, in terms of construction?
That's what we're doing tonight.
Yeah. Because they are, you know, they get very interested in what's going on, and I'm sure they'll have an interest in dust control and everything else.
Right. I mean, we don't, we don't always do that type of thing. We could put a sign up there saying what we're doing, if that's what you'd like. I think a lot of the residents actually know that this is coming, but, yeah, they may not.
Mayor?
Yeah, Laura?
We can put, we can put an article in our town newsletter in the water bill. That's probably what the intention is to do, is that logical?
We can do that, we can put it on our website, or we can do it through the Facebook connection, or whatever, as well, yeah.
We don't have that many people clinging to our television show.
I'm sorry.
Good. Any other, Larry?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just for the record, there's a very likely chance that there is a soil condition where this pipeline's going to go in. In other words, the soil condition is rock. And we made it abundantly clear in the specifications, that if they encounter rock, that they're unable to move, that there is not a quote-unquote "rock clause." And although a contractor, or many contractors, really like to have a rock clause, which oftentimes is a license to steal, there is none in this, and it was made abundantly clear. You have to do the excavation, install the pipe, regardless of the soil conditions. So I just want that on the record.
Any other questions or comments? Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Neil, would you be able to go back to the visual of the location for me, please? Okay.
It looks like it's your house.
All right. So, looking down at the bottom of the screen, here is the Stone Ridge Water Tank. And I'm just trying to put this together in my mind, but the Summit is a separate tank? Am I getting it?
Yes.
Okay. And so, then, I'm just trying to put it together where it's placed.
Where the Summit Tank is?
Yes.
Okay, so the Summit Tank, it's a separate project entirely, but we're doing the design for both tanks at the same time. They're both water tanks, you know, the site conditions are a little bit different, but it's not that much different in terms of the type of project. The Summit Tank, there's an existing Summit Tank, which is right up here on Glassford Hill, the one that's in the cleft, as you're going up the trail. Okay, that's the existing Summit Tank. The Summit Two Tank is going to be right behind that one. And I think, I had a presentation before council about a month and a half ago, about that water tank, and maybe you weren't here, I don't recall, but we talked about that as well. But that's where the Summit Two Tank is going to go.
Oh, that's good. I just can't hold everything in my head. But I'm a real visual learner, so this is helpful. Thank you. And then, as far as the funding goes, looking at 18 and 19, and does it expand into further fiscal years, to be able to complete the projects?
No, not at this time. So, what may happen is, is we're going to get the two tanks designed, and we will put them out to bid. And if, and I think when the design's going to get done, we're going to be somewhere, getting close to November by the time we're done with the, with the design. We'll probably put them out to bid in January, and then we'll be able to award in April, or something like that, or a little bit sooner if we need to. But at that point in time, we will know what those tanks are going to fully cost. And if we don't have the budget available, we can basically add additional budget to the next fiscal year to cover the final installation of those, of those tanks. But I would hope with the amount we've got budgeted, that we're able to do it, especially taking the, some of the money that was going to be spent next year, we're spending it this year out of the budget we have. So, I'm pretty hopeful that we're, we're going to not need an additional year to get the projects done.
Sure. And that would not be unusual, to shift money in certain fiscal years. I think for purposes, maybe when you come back at the next council meeting, if we just take a look at what those visuals are on the fiscal years for the funding, for the two projects, I would like to see that.
For the, for future years?
Yes, looking, design and construction going on. I'd like to be able to see it all in front of me, because I know we usually have a table, that would be helpful.
Okay. And you will, yeah, you'll have a table in here, which shows it, and essentially it shows that next fiscal year, starting in July, we've got the, that we've got $3 million for the Stone Ridge project, and we've got $2.5 for the Summit Tank. That's all, that's what it's going to show.
Okay. That's, no, that's great. I'd like to be able to see where we're headed. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Any other comments, questions, anything else, Neil?
I believe that's it.
I think what you've demonstrated is, we don't do it until we have the money to do it. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, we move on to number eight, seven. Discussion Stormwater Regulations. Ron, you're up.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Got a nice little stormwater cycle exhibit for you. So, we're here to recommend implementation of a stormwater ordinance, brand-new Chapter 12, which Ivan and his staff have compiled for us. And a little bit of background on how this came about, Prescott Valley is considered an MS4 operator, and what that means is, we have and operate a stormwater septic, or stormwater sewer system that's separate from the sewer system, which would, which goes down to the treatment plant. So that is basically our roadside ditches, our washes, culverts, drainage networks, detention basins. So we are responsible for maintenance of those, and we're also responsible for monitoring or preventing any pollutants from getting into the system. And we're also responsible for monitoring or preventing any pollutants from leaving our community and getting into another system. So, the Clean Water Act mandates that MS4 operators have to operate under a permit. And so, we operate under a stormwater discharge permit, which is administered by ADQ. And there's various provisions in there. One would be a stormwater plan, and the stormwater plan would have various inspection procedures. What are your procedures for construction sites, or industrial sites, or residential areas? What kind of community outreach do you have? What kind of training do you have for your employees? What kind of cleaning do you do of your system? One of the components, which is a big component, is the enforcement authority. Now, the latest permit came out in 2016, and it was a little more stringent than the previous permits that we had had. The last one was 2002. And one of the requirements, which ADQ seems pretty strong for, is a mandated stormwater ordinance. It's pretty much everything that we've had in place before, but what we've done is basically condensed and compiled into one, one chapter. And I can probably let Ivan comment if he'd like. Do you have any comment on any of that?
No comment.
Larry is whispering in my ear not to say anything.
Okay.
So, I'm going to listen to Larry. I don't do it often, but I'll listen to him.
That's a first, right? Ron?
Yes, sir.
And that's pretty much it. I mean, it's everything, it's various parts of town code, and how we enforce, you know, how we identify pollutants, those sort of things are all in there. It's things we've already had in place.
Laura?
I hope the citizens watching at home, in particular, and those here, are comforted that we have such strong stormwater regulations, and that we honor them, because unfortunately, we do have, we do have problems here. And I just want to say, since 1999, when I moved here, we don't have as many problems, and this is why.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Ron?
No, sir.
Good, good job, Ron. Okay, if that's it, then we'll move on to number, what is it, number eight, discussion, the RV Parkway Parking Lot Rehab. Norm, you're going to do that one?
Yes, I am, Mayor. What I'm here to talk to you tonight, Mayor and Council, is, actually is parking lot maintenance. And in addition to street maintenance, we also do parking lot maintenance, because we do have some parking lots that are within our town right-of-ways. And rightfully so, where these work very well, is some of the parking areas, you can see this one in PV Parkway, this is actual right-of-way, but it's adjacent parking that we are required to maintain. In addition to Main Street, also is here, as you can see, as part of our Event Center rehabilitation, we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining Main Street, so that everything is, I'll bring it to you next week, some of the other projects we have for the parking lot maintenance, we've talked about in early April, the bids we received. But what we're seeing here is actually parking lot maintenance along Main Street, which will include an asphalt slurry seal. Give you a little bit about chip sealing we do for streets, you can't perform for parking lots, it doesn't work, you know, it just gets torn up. So you actually do a slurry seal, different type of asphalt product, and different maintenance procedure we do. But what it does do is it rehabilitates the surface, and gives you that life cycle refreshment. And so, it's been about, you know, 10 years for each one of these particular pavements. So, that's what we're going to do here, is use her funding to rehabilitate these pavements. One thing we do about this particular project, too, is we're taking advantage of, since these are very simple in scope, you can have a very simple exhibit like this, you don't need to do any engineering, or spend much staff time on them. We use the Mohave competitively bid contract, that statewide, that parking lot contractors bid competitively per square yard. So what you do is, take their particular prices, and this way, when you just give them an exhibit, they can apply competitively bid prices and give you a price. And so, what we're doing is using the Mohave contract, which is a state procurement ability we have, in order to get specialized parking lot contracts to do this work, in addition to the parking lot restriping. So that's what we're doing. These are parking lots within rights of way, doing an asphalt slurry seal, which is a good maintenance course. And once again, it's part of the life cycle treatment, to maintain our parking lots that we're responsible for, in a good manner, and in good working condition. So, do want to point out to Council that with the good season to do this, very similar to chip seal, we would like to do this project starting July 1st. So this is a project we would like to discuss and vote on next week, and say, with the new budget year coming up, we can start this project July 1st, and it'll dovetail very well, especially the Main Street project, with a lot of the parking lot rehabilitation we plan to do after July 1st, as part of the Event Center upgrades. So, once again, economy and scale helps. You can see some of the small area along Main Street, coupling this with PV Parkway parking lot maintenance, we get economy and scale, and all the competitive bid prices from Mohave contracts. So, it will be a nice project to do during the hot summer months in July, and best time to do it. With that, any questions I can answer?
Questions, anyone? Comments? Mike?
No, sir.
No, no question.
Oh, we'll bring it back next week.
Everybody agreeable to that? Bring her back, Norm.
Very good, we'll do that next week.
Good job. Okay, with that, we'll go on to number nine. Discussion Summer of 2018 Chip Seal Program. Nora, you going to do that, too, Norm?
I am.
Mayor, every year, I, Mayor and Council, every year we come before you to talk about our annual chip seal program. I think Council's well aware that with the half-cent sales tax put into place in January 16, we've supercharged our pavement enhancement program. So what I want to do tonight was talk to you about the chip seal, which is the final application, you're well aware, of some of the maintenance courses we've done, to get it ready for the final icing on the cake, so to speak, of the chip seal. What I wanted to do was just talk about our pavement maintenance program. And this is our Summer 18 program. I think, Council's well aware, that we started with a five-year program, we've done two years, and this is our third-year program this summer of 18. So, Council recalls, we do our exhibits and all, got, in a couple of slides, show you that we do some pre-check maintenance, crack sealing, patch some potholes, get the pavement ready, and then the final application is the chip seal. So, this is year three of a five-year program. I think Council's aware, the first year, we did a lot of our major arterial roads, and then we start on some of our residential streets. So, a lot of our major arterials have been done, and we're starting now on a lot of the residential streets. And we've done quite a bit of the residential streets in the past. So, we're in a year three. And Council may recall that this is an updating of the map, this is current, it shows the effort towards eliminating the backlog, so to speak, and getting to a five-year program. So we're working, still working on this particular map, and working towards, you can see the, did want to point out, if you can see the detail, but we still have an 11th year there, which is still black, which is Yavapai Road. The reason that one didn't fall off with the other black-colored areas, was because that's where we're recommending a little more than just a chip seal, that's going to be, we would like to recommend a overlay, and better pavement rehabilitation there. So, just like, I always like to show that this is how we manage the streets, that's how we know what's been done, what hasn't been done yet, what's coming up when we talk to residents. So, we are going to be at the home show this weekend, too, and a lot of residents, very popular with residents to say, tell me about the street maintenance program. If they know where they live, we can tell them when they've been done, when they can expect to be done in the future, and what service year. So, I always like to point that out, is, that's the reason that one's left, is part of our pavement maintenance program, and knowing where we're at. Did want to show you this year's Summer of 18 program, as you can see up there, the color codes, we talked about the pre-check maintenance that we do with part of the $2 million. I'd like to call Council's attention to the corner there, of the $2 million that is allocated every year for enhanced street maintenance of the five-year program. I do like to show that the chip seal is actually, if you look at the two, low-volume and high-volume chip seals, it's about $700,000. Well, if you look, actually, the pre-check maintenance is actually more, starting to be more, because we're getting to the core of the town on some of the streets that need more rehabilitation. So actually, we're going to spend about $1.3 million this year. So, next week, when we, or next council round, when we talk about annual contracts, we'll talk about that. But this is talking about the chip seal maintenance. But I did want to point out, that revolving cycle of, the first year, we do significant rehabilitation, before we put that final chip seal layer on. As you can see, the alternating colors in the legend there is the low-volume chip seal, and then the streets are more heavily traveled, we use a little more expensive product, and the high-volume chip seal, a little thicker mat and a seal coat on it. But you can see, that's about $200,000 this year. And you can see the streets that are targeted. Actually, after this current year, we're actually have done all of our major arterials over this three-year cycle. In fact, this year's high-volume roads is actually the smallest it's been in a couple of years, because we concentrated first on the heaviest used roads, which makes good sense. So, we'll start getting more heavily involved in the low-volume residential streets. As you can see, that's this year's chip seal program. This went out on the website back in November, and that's for our residents, and our use, and also residents' reference, always talking about what's coming up, and what residents can expect. Just a few slides, of course, very proud of our hot mix patch wagon, we actually don't put as much cold mix down, which I don't think anyone's in favor, we don't like it as much as the hot mix. So, we were able to purchase that particular piece of equipment, you see in it, in use. And so, all that pre-check maintenance is what we're showing here. That spot patching there, as you can see, a streets department for our network, and some crack sealing going on there, too, in asphalctic pavements. As you can see, this is what our streets does, the pre-check maintenance. As we talked about, we're spending in the neighborhood of 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. Streets provides about $400,000 that work, and then by private contractor, they do a very similar operation. So in tandem, we address all the particular roads, and this is just some pictures of what the particular blade laying, and some of that edge patching upgrade that we do. As you can see, with the new mix being laid. Remember, we talked about the historic widths being restored due to degradation of garbage trucks, and a lot of the edge breaking off, and roads getting skinnier. We're able to restore that, without doing a full rehabilitation, which we'd like to do, but once again, it's a game of expenditure and budget funds. But we can do a real nice job restoring those edges, and you can see the interim condition here. And as we prepare it for the final chip seal, as you can see, being applied there by Earth Resources, they're our contractor again this year. And this last picture I always like to show, is you can see the core of the town, this isn't the worst road that we picked out to give it some impact. This is just about all the roads in the core of the town, the four sections of the town, the edges break off. As you can see, what the condition was before, and the pre-check maintenance we do, as you saw in the other slides. And then, of course, the final chip seal is what that road looks like. And we think this is a very good methodology for a good economy, to restore the roads to a much better service level standard. So that's the particular presentation there. What I did want to talk about, too, was, every year we talk about, with our ability to move our budget through and be ready to go July 1st, we do take bids early for chip seal. We got four contractors to bid this, very happy that Earth Resources was the low bidder. And we'll present that next week, or recommendation for award. And keep in mind, this is next year's budget for FY 1819, that starts July 1st. Same model we've used for many years, just like to get a jump start on it. Large projects like this, too, retire a lot of lead time to get to aggregate, so that if, once they do get go on July 1st, they're going to know they're going to get awarded the job. There's a lot of rock crushing, to make sure that aggregate's ready for delivery. In addition to the oil orders, they look way out, that's why we get a good price. We do this way in advance, so they know that the particular oil providers know that we're a certain portion of that oil they cook up and have ready for. So, lots of queuing needs to be done, and party planning, so to speak, before we really start the chip seal. So we like to get a jump start, and very similar model we've used every year. So next week, I'd like to bring this back to you, and recommend award of the FY 1819 chip seal to this low-bid contractor.
Questions?
That's our program.
Everybody agreeable to, Norm, bringing it back next week?
I just want to say, it's very good use of that one half-cent sales tax increase we made. The streets are looking very different. The streets are looking very different.
Yes, sir. I think our service level is much, much enhanced. Great expectation for the expenditure and budget.
And it was important that you reminded that this is a five-year program. We couldn't, we couldn't redeem them all in one year. So it's a five-year project, but it, it's really beginning to...
What are you, halfway through or more?
Well, yeah, probably getting closer to half with some of the pre-check maintenance. But, you know, once again, with year three, we've done 40%, but we'll turn the corner at more than half this next year. And once again, you can, once you turn the corner, you can really start, start seeing that, that the fruits of all the labor. You know, especially the, the workmanship that, not only the streets, but can't say it enough, our local contract committee has really embraced this particular project. And the workmanship is very, very superior. And they do take, their local contractors, they take pride in the work they do, too. So, I think a lot of what you're seeing is, yes, it's our streets' labor, but in addition to local contract committee, different contractors have gotten to work every year. Local contractors have done a whiz-bang job of the workmanship, because this is difficult work. It takes real craftsmen to do this work.
Good. Comments?
No, we like the, the word "whiz-bang."
You want to use your, uh, mic?
The word.
Use your microphone, Mike?
I like "whiz-bang."
Whiz-bang, okay.
And very, very superior.
Heidi?
Yeah. We have a lot of new people that are, some of them are in the audience, and some are, you know, home watching. Just let them know that when we increase the sales tax by the half-cent, and we were able to put the money, prior to us being able to spend that extra money, the cycle for your street being redone was close to nine years, every nine years. And it's designed to be done every five years. So we are getting back to, and, and you, you keep referring to us. I just want to make sure they know what you're talking about. So, when we're done with the five-year cycle, we will be back to having every street done, hopefully within a fi, you know, a five-year period. And that was the main goal of putting so much money towards your department, so.
Yeah. Custom Grocery, if you remember my presentations, what you really want to do is you want to preserve that big investment. If you do your maintenance like, like we're, we're catching up with, we're going to preserve that big investment. And I caution that if we hadn't moved forward that, we could see a more significant failure in expenditure that you reach that cliff. And I'm just very glad that we've got this funding source and we're able to deliver it to the residents, because you can see the enhanced street maintenance, and we're going to see the fruits of that when we're done, that we're going to have very good pavement section, which, as we point out, for the long term. And that's really what we're looking at.
Good. Any other comments, question? Norm, it's good to hear that we're accelerating to a five-year plan now and succeeding.
We're having a lot of fun doing it, too, Mayor.
Keep it up.
Undeliver it.
Okay. You going to bring that back to us?
We will, next week.
I think everybody's agreeable? Thanks, Norm. Okay. We're going to go on to number 10. Discussion, CIP number F402 Civic Center Roof Replacement Project. Are you taking that one, too, Norm? Bill isn't here. Or Larry, were you coming in?
The, the Mayor and Council, we went out to bid for the roof replacement. And the bids, when opened, came in significantly higher than engineers' estimate. And so, we are in the process of rejecting all bids and redoing the bid specifications, which will be advertised Sunday. And that will start the clock moving forward. We're hoping to cut about $200,000 to $250,000 off of the lowest bid. But we are victims of the very good economy that we have. We don't have the number of contractors willing to, to submit bids on any of the road projects, because they're all busy. And that's, that's a good thing.